All right, welcome everyone. I will call the November 22nd meeting of the watershed planning commission to order. Our first item is to approve the agenda in the meeting minutes. So please take a look at the agenda and meeting minutes that were sent out. And at this time, if you have any additions to the agenda or modifications, please speak up.
This is Commissioner Beering. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. And I want Commissioner Beering, do, is your motion to approve the agenda as presented and also the minutes?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'll do roll. Commissioner Weaver.
Hi.
Commissioner Pitt.
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
Commissioner Shay.
Hi.
Commissioner Veerling.
Hi.
And Commissioner Phil.
Hi.
Thank you.
Great, the motion has passed, so we can move on. There were no public comments received, so we can move into staff reports, starting with Troy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, everybody. I'll just read some highlights from the reports that you find in your packet. For November, technical assistance and car share requests. So this is the emphasis of the land water treatment program. You see, we're hovering right around that 200 mark. Just below it, the last maybe five, four, five months now. And a little over 100 of those are project-related, meaning they are projects that are either in the planning stages or in the payment and final closeout certification phase. So you can see, it's a little bit over half, half of the number of requests we have. Soil health and cover crop initiative, continue with the five-year strategic plan. We collected some samples from the two test plots, or the test plot and two comparison plots, sorry. We're gonna be publishing that data on social media. We'll also have a sort of a halfway interim report on progress made with the cover crop program and all that media, or that data will be included in there as well. Got a couple new requests for funding and staff are working with, in partnership with the water, prior Lake, Spring Lake Watershed District on two winter soil health workshops, one in January and one in March, but producers from across the entire county will be invited to participate in that. They're looking at getting at least 100, 100 attendees, so that'll spill way over into a county-wide event. Clean water education programs, so we can continue to implement the annual work plan. Of course, we had the tour last month. It highlighted groundwater. We had our follow-up meeting for outdoor ed, just to discuss how things went, what worked, what didn't, and what kind of improvements we want to make for next year. Um, we began working on our 2021 annual report and did a number of events with the winter salt reduction kits in the city of Alcoa Market Prior Lake, as well as pet waste management or practices for the bacteria side of things. Distributed those in the city of Alcoa Market, or city of Alcoa Market in Prior Lake as well. Zoning and livestock, we worked with a couple landowners and producers, provide assistance related to livestock waste and permitting buffer law. We did not have any activity. We're still waiting on the most recent aerial photography to complete our 21 compliance checks. Tree native plant sale program, so we have our order in for over 37,000 trees. Our sale will start as January 1st, so if you're interested in trees. Get on early because we have, there's just a lot of demand. We were not able to get a couple of species. So this is, demand is high and I don't know if availability is low, but it's possible to. Water quality groundwater rainfall monitoring. So I think John took his last couple rounds of sampling from Roberts Creek. We did not do any observation well monitoring this month. It was not a month within the cycle. You'll see the rainfall monitoring there. The, this is two years worth of data now, including for this and the next one. You'll see that for the month of October, precipitation was very close to meeting the average at the Jordan Field Station. So this is kind of a good indicator of where we're at relative to normal year. And of course, we had those really dry months, January or July, August. Let's see, construction erosion control. So the bars indicate the number of inspections. You see, we had over 300 inspections, which was really a probably a record as far back, because we've been tracking anyway in terms of number of inspections. And then plan reviews held right around the 20. That's indicated by the purple line. Well, in Conservation Act, this is a time of year where we get a flurry of activity. Folks are trying to get their wetland delineations approved before winter sets in, so folks will plan their projects through the winter. So you'll see quite a bit of activity under the Wetland Conservation Act. They won't go into all the specifics there. Terrestrial invasive species management. So this is related to the work we do in cooperation with the county and other local partners on infectious weed control specifically focused on wildfire snip. In any event, we had a grant from 21 that's being closed out for 2000, and we submitted another grant for this year for 5,000. We found out that we were awarded that grant this recently. In fact, we're happy about that. Conservation rental equipment. So you can see for 21 now, the bar chart there on the far right is showing that we had a record year. We almost hitting 2,500 acres, and believe it or not, the equipment is still out there and is going to be used. So this, this number is going to get even, even higher. So it's just another nice barometer to show a level of interest and people are doing more cover crops and seedings than, than I don't know if I want to say more, but just that trend continues strong. Cost share grant balances. I just have the soil and water and the WMO grants, the ones we use in the WMO jurisdiction, you can see about $738,000 worth of cost share still sitting out there. A good chunk of that is going to be expiring within the next one or two years. So we got a lot of money to spend in a short period of time. Finally, the table there showing payments and applications that were approved. Now, keep in mind, this is from October and November. We did not report October. So this table includes both months of action taken by the SWCD board. So new applications, we got cover crops, conservation cover, stream bank protection, filter strips, field borders, and underground outlet. And I believe, Ryan, there's going to be like three on the agenda here that do require WPC review and recommendation as well. But with that, Madam Chair, I'll try to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Troy. Any questions? Okay, I think we can move up to, or move down to the WMO updates. Vanessa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, I've got a few different updates. Just real quick, I did present at the Bowser Academy at the end of October. That went pretty well. It was on a joint panel with a couple other administrators from county and SWCD agencies. Bowser Academy was again virtual this year, and I haven't actually presented at Bowser Academy before, so that was a nice change for me. Bowser reached out and asked if I'd be willing to participate, and I said, sure. So that was a nice experience. Met Council also reached out to me earlier this year and asked if I'd be willing to participate on their advisory committee for the 2050 event council plan. If I remember correctly, I believe Paul did this as well. And that meeting just started occurring as well about last month. So we're meeting about two or three times a year to kind of help guide the direction of Met Council's 2050 plan. If you guys are familiar with the 2040 Thrive MSP, we're looking at the water and wastewater section and providing guidance and direction and really trying to encourage county priorities and WMO and WD priorities into that plan. So that's another advisory committee that I'm on, and I'll provide any updates that I have while I do that. It's been entertaining. One watershed, one plan is the other large partnership that we have going on here in the county and within Rice and La Sora as well. We're finally able to kind of get up and running on that. So I'll be reaching out to our representatives for a policy committee meeting here in December. Both Commissioner Veerling and Commissioner Weaver, Chairman Weaver, Chairwoman Weaver, sorry, Madam Chair, were picked by the county commissioners to represent us on that. So that's exciting to get going with that, finally. Another larger task we've been working on, which is not directly related to the WMO, but it is the natural resources and water resources work that we do for the county, is we're starting to take a look at our, our fee schedule and what we are charging for permit fees. We apparently haven't updated any of our fees in about 10 years. So it's, it's starting to dig a little too deeply into our reserves each year for that natural resources budget, and it's, it's just not sustainable. So we kind of have to bring those up and bring those to being current. So another project that we are working on. Finally, last two things, the watershed management study, which is that watershed management project that we have been working on with Prior Lake, Spring Lake Watershed District and the Soil and Water Conservation District. We did meet again as the project management team, and we held a technical advisory committee to bring them our existing conditions. So that kind of described who we were, what we do, and what's currently existing between the, the different agencies. So we got a lot of good feedback from the technical advisory committee. And then we'll be bringing that information to the steering committee here in a couple weeks. And then that steering committee, which is comprised of two border commissioners from each of those agencies. So there's two from the county, two from Prior Lake, Spring Lake Watershed District, and two from the SWCD. We'll also review that information and then provide guidance and feedback as to next steps. I assume at that point, the existing conditions, information that we have put together will be posted on the project webpage or whatever guidance they direct us to do. Information available will be available at that time. But I just want to give you guys an update, because it is something we work on rather hard, and you don't see a lot of it, but we are moving forward and working hard on that. Finally, one area of concern that I did want to bring to your attention is that we have been working on a reconciliation with Bowser regarding our watershed-based implementation funding grant. This reconciliation is necessary in order to get the next chunk of our grant funding. And it is a standard reconciliation that's usually done with grants of a higher risk value. Unfortunately, we do seem to keep running into communication issues and consistency issues with Bowser, and it's becoming, again, increasingly difficult and time, time-intensive. Staff have put over 140 hours towards this reconciliation since August, and that means that's time that we can't be spending doing other projects and activities and meeting our plan goals. And Bowser is still concerned that we are repeating grant issues and grant compliance issues that they say we have done in the past. Unfortunately, the information that they provided us, which was the program and project files from the targeted grant, the corrective action from before the targeted grant, and the financial audit from the targeted grant do not actually align with the issues they say we have at this time. So I'm struggling with understanding why Bowser feels we are repeating some issues that have happened with our past targeted grant. So I will need to reach out to them and ask them to really clearly identify what grant compliance issues are actually being repeated, if any. I don't feel that there is right now. I believe there's just maybe a misunderstanding on their end, but either way, what we need to do to make the grant compliant is something we certainly want to focus on, and we will absolutely do. And just wanted to bring that to your attention, because it is extremely time-intensive and it does impact whether or not I feel it's necessary for us to go after Bowser grants in the future, because they have to be cost-effective. And that means if the staff is spending too much time working on grant compliance, it's just not worth it to us to pursue them moving forward. They just don't pay off. So that's something I will keep you apprised of and let you know how that works out. Bowser does have to make a decision as to whether or not they'll grant us an extension on our existing watershed-based funding grant from 2019. We'd like them to grant an extension on that, but if they don't, you know, they don't. And it is what it is. So last thing I have is just a reminder that the next meeting we would normally have is actually in December. I may recommend in January that maybe we officially just don't do December meetings moving forward, unless there is a major issue that comes up. I don't foresee us having a December meeting. We really appreciate your time and commitment and dedication. And we want that to be reflected in giving you at least the holidays off whenever possible. So we do strive to coordinate what we bring to you in a way that works around the holidays. So at the moment, I don't foresee us having a December meeting. I just wanted to let you know that now. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions or elaborate on any information that I have provided you. Thank you.
Thanks, Vanessa. Any questions for Vanessa?
This is Troy from Soil and Water. I don't have any question, but I just want to piggyback on what Vanessa was saying about these grants. They have become increasingly onerous for us as well. And some of the things they're pointing to don't make sense to us and things they're accusing in terms of certain types of mistakes and stuff being repeated is just, we find it unfounded as well. So I'd almost like to say the same things as Vanessa in terms of not applying for grant. It really is tempting though, because it's so it's very frustrating. So certainly understand what they're going through, because we get pulled in as well. And I don't think Vanessa, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think your 140 hours includes up the time we spent on as well, helping you train. But information.
You are correct. Try that. That is just my Melissa and Ryan's time. Primarily Melissa, about 120, so of those hours are Melissa alone. So yeah, that's just our staff. It doesn't include all the SWCD staff.
This is Pam, and perhaps the rest of the board knows this already, so I apologize. But can you give us some idea if, if we didn't pursue grants with them, what sort of things might be in jeopardy? I don't need a whole laundry list, but.
No, it's a, it's an excellent question. So Bowser Grants, first of all, Bowser Grants have always changed here or there over the years, depending upon what funding Bowser gets from the state and the types of grant programs that they offer, and then which ones we choose to pursue. More recently, they've, they've chosen the path of these watershed-based funding grants, which are new for Bowser. That's where the grants are smaller overall, but the funds are a little bit more dedicated in that you have a smaller pool of area to draw from. So you know, there's a trade-off in that. With the understanding that these are generally smaller grants, we're probably looking at, you know, $200,000 to $300,000 per biennium, so every two years. It's not as necessarily detrimental of a, of a burden to us, as maybe previous years where the targeted grant was, you know, $2 million. We just don't really see those anymore. We use these grants to help us implement more projects and programs. So a lot of what we're doing with the watershed-based implementation funding is related to supplementing our tax program. It does a lot to supplement that. We also use it to pass through, so we pass through funds to the cities of Savage, the cities of Prior Lake, and, you know, the cities of Shakopee to perform studies and implement their own BMPs. So we tend to use these, these funds to help support the work that we do and offset costs. But they're not, as they always say, they're not a replacement for costs. They're not meant to replace local funding. They're always supposed to be to supplement. And that being said, we also have other funding sources which have grown more over the years from the DNR and the MPCA, which generally speaking, have a little bit been easier for us to work with and less burdensome to reconcile and do the management portion of. So, and that's really what we're talking about. The staff time to administer a grant has to be worthwhile, right? It has to be cost-effective. And if we're putting too much staff time into meeting all of the administrative requirements, it doesn't necessarily pay off. So does that kind of give you an idea, Commissioner Casilius, of what we use?
That does. I really appreciate that. Thank you for taking that time.
It's a great question.
Other questions or comments for Vanessa? Okay, I think we can move on to our ongoing business, program updates with Ryan.
Chair Commissioners, I just have kind of one brief update, and then if you remember, in September, Melissa played a video regarding her lake monitoring. And so one of my performance measures this year was coming up with a video that kind of explains our tax program. So first I'll give the update, and then I'll play the video. So our, the kind of the one update I have is if you remember, our Phase 1 Stream Bank stabilization project had one of the vertical logs. So each of the structures have four vertical logs kind of forming square around each of them. In the spring of 2019, we had some ice jams in Sand Creek, and one of those vertical logs snapped off. And so we brought the engineer out there to look at it. They weren't overly concerned about it. They gave us kind of two options. You can fix it, or you can see if it'll fix itself. And we thought it would be important to actually go in there and fix it. You know, we hold maintenance responsibilities over that project for, it's over three decades. So we want to make sure that, you know, it, it holds up during that time. So fast forward to 2020, we were ramping up to do the work and then realized we probably needed to get permits that our original permits didn't necessarily cover the repair work. So we got the permits in February of 2021. And then it's not great to do it in the spring. And our access is across a farm field. So whenever possible, we try to avoid going into the field, if necessary, just to avoid having to pay damages to the crop. So I was working with a few of our highway department folks, three of them, and we came up with a plan to do the work this fall. And really, it's not a lot of work. It's hauling in about 30 yards of riprap and then just placing it where that kind of tree was, where it snapped off, and that would kind of help hold it in place. So a couple weeks ago, I came to realize that those three employees that we went and looked at the site and had the plan, and I got the permissions from the landowners and the renter, those three employees are no longer with the county. So now it will be a little bit of time to kind of get somebody else up to speed. And obviously, with, you know, they're probably a little short staff, so there's a lot of things kind of going on, and we're going to enter their busy season when the snow starts to fly. So long story short, I'm still hopeful we can get something done here from now until spring. But in reality, there is that possibility that we either would have to look maybe outside of our organization or be patient, and hopefully some time would would free up where they can do the work. So I'll, you know, keep the WPC informed as we go along. Like I said, it's not that we are negligent or anything. We're just, we're, we've had a plan in place for a while, and and we're just rolling, rolling with the punches here and, and getting it done. So more to be, more to be kind of discussed in the future on that one. So any questions on that before I would start the tax program video? Okay, so I will stop sharing this screen, and I will start sharing the video. And I'm going to pause it right away just to make sure everybody can hear it, and then I'll restart it again. So just want to make sure the audio is coming through. Can everyone hear that audio? No, not at all. Okay. All right, maybe increase my volume. I'm going to try it again. How about that? Can everyone hear that? We got one thumbs up. All right, I'll assume that everyone can hear it. So I'll play it. It's about eight minutes long, so enjoy.
I lost sound, Ryan.
Okay, it sounds like we've audio. And I got that from both Vanessa and Troy. So I don't know exactly if it will, you know, what, out there. Could try one more time. Sorry, what was that?
Would you be able to do a voiceover?
Yeah, I can. Yes, I'll, let's see if, when I scroll here, if it goes to the next slide. Does not. So yeah, I can give just kind of a brief overview, and then I did want comments on the video, so we have never posted this live yet. So I wanted to see if anybody had anything. But what I can do is I believe, yeah, I have it on YouTube, and what I can do is send out that link, and then if anybody has any comments, I'll kind of leave it open for the next few weeks. And then if I hear anything, I'll make adjustments. If not, then I will, I'll get Dominique to post a link on our website with this video, so that way then the general public can find it a little easier. I wouldn't say my YouTube channel is, is very popular. So I don't think I'm getting a lot of, a lot of the public finding this video right now. So but on our website, maybe we get a few more views. So I'll make this as kind of brief as possible. So the video kind of goes through why we have the tax program in the first place. And so this, what you're looking at here is a map of the impaired waters that we have in Scott County. And some of those causes are natural, and others are, you know, due to pre, post-settlement and, you know, activities that we've done. So you know, some of the erosion and sediment in the streams is natural. It comes from inbank, and an example of something that was caused after we settled in the area, more recently be chlorides. You know, the chlorides are coming from our water softeners and road solving. So kind of an example of both there. So our program is really set up to try to, you know, aid our water resources and try to improve them both with natural and unnatural issues. So the video kind of talks about also our geological setting. So, you know, with some of the areas along the Minnesota River poses a challenge just with, it's really steep land. And we've got ravines and, you know, one of our commissioners, Brian Schmitz, from the area. Troy, you know, has done numerous practices along that area, you know, Bell Plain to Blakely. And even north, you know, going further north into Jordan. And even north, you know, going further north into Jordan. You know, we did a study in that area and just found that, you know, those ravines that lead down to the Minnesota River. Just they experienced a lot of erosion. It's still a pretty young landscape from a geological standpoint. And so. You know, with that, it poses challenges that that our cost share program tries to mitigate. You know, we've. Added into our cost share docket, you know, stable outlet. So that way. Taking a tile line, you know, if we do a gray control structure, taking the tile line, spending a little bit more dollars, taking that down the slope. Instead of releasing it maybe on a steep slope and in kind of causing some potential erosion there as well. Then it gets into kind of the. Strategies, you know, what we look at in terms of, you know, why do we pick certain areas and it's based off of studies that we've done. Like I just touched on with the targeted watershed grant, you know, we looked at a lot of CIPs and where they best fit on the landscape. We knew that Middle Sand Creek watershed had ten to fifteen times the sediment. The TSS, the total suspended solids as any other watershed, the Sand Creek. And that's in part because that it goes through a bluff in that area, you know, it drops almost two hundred feet. Coming into the city of Jordan. So it kind of helps identify where we want to put certain practices. You know, all those various studies that that we've looked at. And so. And then also adaptation, you know, and we're going to get into that here a little bit, that we've got a cost share manual, but we don't always. You know, have the right answer or we're trying to look for it. And so. We work with our partners. We incorporate things that we've learned over the last year and we try to instill that in the new cost share manual. Adjust rates, you know, up or down based on participation or funding that we have. We'll get into that in a little bit too. So that's, I'll kind of stop there. But like I said, I'll send out the YouTube video. And I'd be happy to take any comments that people have about the video. I want to make it as good as possible and. As best for the viewers, you know, that it's understandable. So with that, I'll send for any questions.
Any questions for Ryan? To Melissa's program updates.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna move my screen over here so I can read my notes. So with the watershed based funding grant that Vanessa was talking about earlier on November sixteenth. We have submitted everything that Bowser has asked for as far as documentation. As part of the grant reconciliation process. Also on November sixteenth, our board conservationist has asked for the, if we were going to apply for an extension. To have that submitted by the sixteenth. So I put the grant extension request together, sent that also on the sixteenth. She can't act on that, she told us, until the reconciliation is actually completed. So I don't expect an answer from her until. The Bowser reviewer who is reviewing all of our grant information actually says this is complete. I have everything I need. I've also completed or worked on an RBA, request for board actions for the December fourteenth county board. To authorize us amending that grant agreement with Bowser. To the end of twenty twenty-two. So we're asking for a year extension. There were a few activities in that grant that we couldn't finish up. Some of the reasons were, you know, the pandemic really. Cause us to not be able to do some of the activities because of, you know, the CDC recommendations and. There was staff illnesses due to COVID that kind of set some of the activities back. So. We're asking for an extension to try to finish spending those funds and finish up all the activities. Also, as part of the reconciliation, when we reconciled the WMO staff time, we found we have some extra dollars. That we can move to some other activities that are similar. So I'm also doing a work plan amendment for that grant. That I will be submitting probably the next week or so, just to move a few funds around. The AIS program, so our watercraft inspections ended on September twenty-fifth. They did send me the end of year, end of season report, which is just a two-page report that the DNR asks for. Which is required as part of our delegation agreement with the DNR. The DNR actually has to delegate authority to the county to be able to hire somebody to do watercraft inspections at their accesses. So as part of that delegation agreement, they ask for this two-page report at the end of the season. Otherwise, I don't have the larger inspection report yet from waterfront restorations as. I've presented to you in past years showing you how many inspections were on this many days. I was hoping to have that by December. And if we have a December meeting, I'll present that then. Otherwise, you'll see all that information probably at the January meeting. Also, the AIS prevention aid money that we get from the legislature every year. That we use for like watercraft inspections or different AIS education, things that we do. The DNR asks for a metrics report of that program and what we use that money on. So I'll be working on that over the next couple of weeks. And I will have that in the next meeting packet, whether that's December or January for you. I wanted to share my screen and show you. One thing, let's see. Okay, so. A couple of weeks ago, Matt McLees from our GIS department and I met with the DNR. Their GIS person. Regarding our, that field data application that I had showed you at our past meeting on how that works on my phone. So this is when the data is taken from that application and put into a spreadsheet. This is what it looks like. But from there, the DNR has created an application. They created it in-house that takes this data. And they can quickly have it compute all these different. Metrics from it. So and a lot of these metrics go right into that lake report. And I, and I didn't know how they were doing this so quickly because they were doing it like within. A couple of days and then sending it to me. So there's the summary of kind of all. You know, all the data. And they do depth comparisons, which is put in the report, taxa comparisons of the different types of species that are found. You know, just this, these different kind of metrics. So we met with them and we asked, you know, how are you doing this? Would you be willing to share this? And so it came down to they are willing to share this application that they created in-house with us so that. When we download our data, which looks like this raw data, then this application, all these calculations for me just. Really quickly. So I don't have to spend a lot of time doing this. So. It's just another one of those things that the DNR has been really good with us to collaborate with and share data and share information. And it's just been a really. Good partnership with them, especially with this program. So. So looking forward to getting that. Matt's gonna, Matt from our GIS department is gonna set that all up for me. And the last thing I have to talk about is the McMahon outlet project, just some update on that. We did receive the contract from the DNR on October thirteenth. Vanessa and I had both reviewed it. I uploaded it to our contract site on October eighteenth. And I've been checking it because the DNR has asked, you know, do they have any comments yet? What are they? And it really wasn't moving and I checked on it and it just got forwarded today. To the attorney and risk management. So it's. It, things are kind of moving slow there, but it is moving on now. Thank goodness. So it'll, it'll get reviewed and hopefully we should hear. Back in the next few weeks of if there are already comments or changes that. Scott County would like to see of that. Also, as part of the McMahon project, Megan and I and Jesse Krasinski with Environmental Health. Who's been putting together the environmental assessment worksheet document for us. Met to go over the progress of that. Jesse's at a point where he has asked Megan and I to kind of fill out some additional information in there. That he, he doesn't. He's not sure how to fill that in, you know, where the data is and what to say. So. I'll be going over that yet this week to kind of see if I could fill in some of that information. But I would say the document is about eighty percent complete. It's, it's pretty far. And so after that draft is finished, at least what Megan and I can contribute to it. I will hand it off to Vanessa to do, you know, a good final thorough review. And then by then it should be ready for the public review process. So, so at least in that aspect, things are coming along really well. And that's all I have. So with that, I'll stand for any questions if anybody has.
Any questions for Melissa? Hearing none, we will move on to new business. Looks like Vanessa, you're up again with a final levy and budget.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioner. It's always exciting budget, right? So as you remember, I came to you last in August for the proposed levy. And basically a budget outline at that time. So and that's because the proposed levy itself is actually due at the end of September. However, the full budget and final levy are actually due at the end of the year. So I'm coming to you now with the final recommended levy draft and budget. So not too much has changed, but there is more finite details in the budget portion. The levy is still the same as proposed earlier. So. Just get to it because everybody likes a good budget conversation. So. Again, to meet our existing obligations and achieve the watershed management plan goals and maintain our current service levels. And basically, we're just trying to maintain current service levels. We're not increasing anything exponentially that we haven't before. That being said, between plan years, we may be higher or lower in effort in certain program areas. But that is anticipated and still within plan. So we are proposing a levy of one million, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and. Forty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents with a total budget of one million, seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars. Some of the key factors influencing the twenty twenty-two budget. Include, again, that overall revenue remains noticeably down compared with the past ten years. Or I guess another way to say that is our budget looks very similar to what it did roughly ten years ago. A lot of that is due to not having the very large grants, like the targeted grant for two million dollars adding to our budget. So we're kind of back to those pre-large grant revenue streams. The, the twenty twenty-two revenue is, is expected to be similar to what we had last year. The levy increase is three percent, which is the minimum proposed in our approved twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-six watershed management plan. It is in line with both the Scott WMO and county policy for levy increases. For those of you who pay attention to the county, their twenty twenty-two proposed county levy increase is three point nine eight at the moment. So. We do try to stay in line with that as much as possible and whenever possible. The proposed twenty twenty-two levy is, again, like I said, about one point three million compared to the proposed. Compared to the twenty twenty-one levy, which was one million, two hundred and ninety thousand. So it's about an increase of thirty-eight thousand, thirty-nine thousand dollars. Tax impact, which is what you guys see every day on your bill. That's probably what matters most to people is how does this affect me? The actual average market value resident impact is actually a decrease this year of about a dollar twenty-one. So it's going from about thirty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents to thirty-six sixty. A lot of that has to do with the growth within the WMO area. The value of property is basically. We have more people and more ability to spread out the funds. And so. Their biggest to see who's been here a while, a bit of a decrease for the average homeowner. There's always a range. Some will have more, some will have less. The draft budget is seventy-two percent land and water treatment. We are still staying within the seventy percent range that we always have. The decrease in revenue compared to the last ten years again reflects a new norm in grant funding with more stable grants. But that are more smaller grants and they do tend to require a higher match upfront. And again, the Bowser grants have become significantly more burdensome to administer. And are likely unlikely to be an efficient use of SWMO time to pursue in future years. And I can bring this to you again at our next meeting with a little bit more detail as we learn more about the outcome of the reconciliation. And again, this is the reconciliation from the twenty nineteen watershed based funding grant. So. It's a couple of years old, but it's still useful information. So grants anticipated, we were obviously successful in obtaining several grants that began in twenty twenty-one. There are no new grants for twenty twenty-two. A lot of our grants are biennial or multi-annual grants, multi-year grants. That being said, revenue is not always reflected in the same year as expenses because these are reimbursed base grants. So once again. We encumber the funds and we don't deposit those funds into our account until they've been encumbered. So that funds are always held into a holding account. Or we don't apply for them from the funding agency until we've actually spent the money. So we have to spend the money upfront generally. So sometimes those procedures, actually many times that crosses years. So they're not necessarily reflected in revenue until expenses have been fully encumbered or reimbursed. Just a repeat of the grants that we have. And we've had the same ones next year as we will this year. Another impact is that cost share demand does remain high. We are still working on pursuing a dedicated baseline fund for the tax program. What that looks like long term is something we still need to continue to work on. And it is hard to dedicate a baseline tax program. Until we really sit down and look at what we've been doing over the past ten years, which we know that with SWCD efforts, it's been certainly a growing program. And maybe that the program is actually growing faster than we're able to support it. And so we need to really take a hard look at that and make sure that. We can continue to make that a successful program. It is anticipated again that the education outreach budget will remain low again in twenty twenty-two. This is due to, again, the unfortunate need to continue reducing general levy expenses in order to meet grant match obligations, maintain other program service areas. And still balance the budget. So for the past several years, the SWMO has contributed more and more funds to support the Scott County Watershed Education Partnership. As other partners withdrew because frankly, it is an amazing program and an amazing partnership. But it's just an unsustainable level of support once we ended that Sand Creek targeting grant. So for those of you who recall, we do pay for about, you know, ninety to ninety-eight percent of the Scott County Watershed Education Partnership. And that becomes a little bit unsustainable for us, unfortunately. No matter how much we wish we could, we just simply can't. Maintain that level and still meet our other program goals. So. And something else we'll work out with, with the program partners, but it is reflected in our budget this year. Several program areas do have very little or minor changes anticipated for twenty twenty-two, including administration. Monitoring, education, regulation, planning and coordination. This is again due to trying to maintain consistency with twenty twenty-one since our revenue is consistent basically with twenty twenty-one. There is anticipated a sixty thousand dollar increase to inventory and assessment this year in order to contribute towards critical LIDAR updates. Uh current county LiDAR is over ten years old. This affects this affects the ability for us to identify good BMP locations. Uh watershed runoff, pretty much any of our surveys and watershed assessments are based upon. Uh accurate and effective LiDAR data and with data that is so old, it is hard to be uh efficient in the science, so. Uh Markley Lake Flood Mitigation Assessment, this is again that partnership project uh with the city of Prior Lake and Credit River Township. And then there's a Campbell Lake Regional Stormwater Assessment, which has been in our plan and slated to complete in the next year or two. And this is a partner project with the city of Prior Lake again. So that is identifying regional stormwater assessment, regional stormwater opportunities. Within that sub watershed before development comes in. Because if we can get ahead of it, we're more likely to be successful and more cost effective with stormwater management moving forward. So uh it is anticipated there'll be approximately uh thirty-four thousand dollar deficit in twenty twenty-two. That may fluctuate just a little bit before I go to board. Uh might be a few thousand dollars higher. Um we are one more thing to come in here in the last couple of days, but. Uh it is a notable dip into the fund balance, but it is necessary to maintain our service levels. And uh I'm it's not overly concerning simply because the funding, a lot of that is actually coming from grants that will come in. Uh in future years, so we're covering it now. Uh we're doing the work now, but we won't receive the grant funds until future years, so. Uh it's not necessarily expected to be a long-term deficit. Uh it should eventually um. Oh, sorry, I apologize. I do recommend that that deficit does come out of the fund balance, as I said, so just to be clear, that's where it should be coming from. Uh grant reimbursement, like I said, does not always correlate with the year the expenses were encumbered. And we do have a couple of larger CIPs in our plan. Um currently underway, uh including the McMahon Outfit Outlet, the Pika Creek Ravine Stabilization. And the Cedar Creek Wetland uh that we should do again necessitate that larger upfront cost. So fund balance thankfully is projected to be at about forty-six percent at the end of twenty twenty-two. This was planned um and intentional as we need to have the reserves sufficient for the installation. Of the Xanadu Streambank Stabilization in twenty twenty-four. Um without that increasing fund balance, we will not have the capacity to install that CIP uh within the plan timeline. So with that, I stand for any questions and would uh ask for a uh recommendation from the Commissioners, thank you.
Are you looking for a recommendation to approve the final levy and budget as presented? Or recommend that the county?
Yes, Madam Chair, I apologize. Uh we're asking, the staff is asking that the WPC um. Recommend to the board approval of the levy and budget.
Okay, thank you. Um questions for Vanessa? Let's start there.
They're all so excited.
Commissioner Weaver, this is Commissioner Pence. I would rec- I make the motion to recommend to the WMO Board the approval of the uh budget as presented to us today.
We have a second.
I'm sorry, final levy and budget.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
As Commissioner Shay, I'll I'll second the motion.
I'll do roll. Commissioner Weaver.
Hi.
Commissioner Pence.
Hi.
Commissioner Casillas.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
Commissioner Shay.
Hi.
Commissioner Verling.
Hi.
And Commissioner Phil.
Hi.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, motion has passed. We can move on to the twenty twenty-two tax program docket. Ryan.
And Chair Commissioners, so much like the budget, it's that time of the year to um revisit our cost share program policy manual. Uh which we commonly refer to it as a docket. And so um what we do is we take notes all year long um as various situations pop up. Um and that would be any of the the agencies. So if you recall that our docket is now countywide, so. All the various watershed management organizations and. Um watershed districts adopt this same docket. Now, in the appendices, you'll notice that each uh organization can can vary, because not everybody's. Goals uh are the same, and so um there are some differences that each organization has. Um and so the SWCD is actually the one that sort of houses this uh policy manual. And then um all the various organizations uh adopted on an annual basis. So um what I was saying is that we we take notes all year long, um kind of uh keep a running, a living document. Uh with those changes and then um come this time of the year fall. We have a subcommittee that's made up of uh staff. Uh or administrators uh or board members um from these organizations. And we meet and we go through this docket with all the proposed changes. And the idea is to adapt this um docket to uh meet the needs of our residents, um to improve the program. And so uh I won't go through this line by line. For two reasons, uh the um. This docket's been reviewed by staff several times. Um like I said, the subcommittee went through it. Uh and then also it just went to the SWCD Board as well. So it it goes through quite the the process. Uh I'd be happy to answer any specific questions uh on it. Um I'll go through just kind of the main. Um changes or some of the main changes uh that I outlined in these bullet items. Uh but feel free, if when you read through it, there was something specific um that you noticed, I'd be happy to address that as well. Um and the second part is I've gone through this docket about uh five times myself, so. Uh to not make it six is uh kind of nice is kind of nice too. Um so kind of the biggest change that we're gonna uh that we're proposing. Is the temporary increase to our cost share rates. So if you notice, or or remember, I should say, uh in years past, the idea was to walk those cost share rates down. And that was to create less dependency on the financial assistance of the program. However, um two-part uh why we're increasing or proposing to increase the rates is that. We're noticing um that there's a decrease in interest uh in that. Staff is getting applicants um to kind of back out uh as they're about to sign contracts and actually get them approved. Um and and so one thought was that um that the rates were just too low. Maybe we went too far, too fast. So that was one piece of it, and then also. We have a really high level of cost share funds that are available at the moment, and so. Um you know, it's it's kind of the the lesser of two evils. Do you uh send uh grant funds back? Um and potentially risk, you know, not getting funds or getting reduced amounts in the future by not not moving them. Um or, you know, stay with the current cost share rates. Um and so the idea was because we're having that decreasing interest, high level of cost share. Uh we did bump up the rates, so um there was three tiers. Um the lowest rate was fifty percent. And the next rate was, correct me if I'm wrong, Troy, I think it was sixty percent. And then the highest rate somebody could get was eighty percent. Um and the the tiered system was meant that the higher cost share you receive is based on. Giving back, I guess, somewhat, um and that was in relation to um tillage. And so if the landowner agreed to um maintain a a higher tillage level, so. Um you know, it's thirty percent residue for corn and beans. It really means that you're not tilling your your beans up um in the fall. Uh they could receive the highest highest level. On that lowest level, the fifty percent was really never being used. And so hence why we are proposing to cut that rate out altogether. And so now we've got our two tiers, um tier one and two, the cost share rates, tier one being at ninety percent, so it is quite high. Um and then I am gonna have to peak myself. I think it's seventy or seventy-five percent for that tier two. Uh bear with me for a second. Want to make sure we've got it in there correct. So here's where we got the ninety percent um for the tier one and then tier two. Troy, you there? Maybe you'll give me some time.
No, no, the what it does is it references the cost share rate that's in the actual specific practice.
Oh, got it, okay.
It's seventy is generally that number, but. You know, some have flat rates versus a. It differs. So um but for the most part, seventy percent is about it. There are a few exceptions.
Thank you, Troy. Um and so part of that too is that um not all practices. Can you even achieve that residue tillage, right? So if it was a a urban practice, well, that landowner doesn't have agricultural land contributing to. Um to the practice, and so they never really had the ability to get a higher rate, and so a lot of those are gonna fall into that tier two. Um the seventy percent, so they got a little bit of a bump as well, so from that succeeded the seventy percent, so. I'm gonna stop there because that's the biggest one and see if there's any questions. Um otherwise, the rest of them are more minor. All right, so um next item was conservation cover, so uh you'll notice there's a lot of. Um strike through in both conservation cover and tree and treble establishment. They just got to be sort of unreally uh. Descriptions that were in there. Uh we just kept adding to them with various scenarios in. And looking back at it, we could cut out quite a bit, and so we kind of we removed everything that wasn't agricultural based and then. Um still, we have the ability to put uh native grasses on either pasture land or um in some cases turf. Uh so, you know, um a lawn essentially, and we just created a new practice to kind of separate the two, and so you didn't have to. Keep referencing each one of them and and differentiating between the two, so that was more of just um cleaning things up a bit. Uh we do have. A policy that we're proposing and how to handle projects that are within the watershed district, but discharge outside of it. So for instance, we've had a number of practices. Um this year where. Yeah, the project itself lies within one jurisdictional boundary, let's say Prior Lake, Spring Lake. However, upon further inspection, we noticed that. The water actually drains to the WMO, so our water resources benefit from that. And so we just wanted to clarify how those cases would be handled, so. The idea being that we'd split it fifty-fifty um each organization unless there is a grant that can cover. Um those costs, so if we have the ability to use. Um other funding and that's appropriate, you know, that it's okay to to do that in those situations. That we we can go that route, and so for instance, we have our new EPA grant. We've already checked in with them because we had a project actually that came up that. Um that we're gonna use EPA funds for the project. Uh that was in that same scenario where it lies in the product Spring Lake Watershed District, but actually drains to. Porter Creek, which is an eligible area for that grant. Uh next, cover crops, so increasing the incentive amount from thirty to forty dollars on a single year and then fifty to sixty dollars on a multi-year. Uh contract, so and that really aligns more with actual costs, so. Uh with a lot of things, you know, the costs uh were increasing over time, and so. This is really just to kind of pay the going rate for um, you know, what cover crops cost. Uh the no-till practice, so increasing the contract term from two to five years to reflect the long-term commitment of this practice that this practice requires. So it's much like cover crops, you know, the the benefit is really down the road further, and so trying to. Uh extend that out, so any applicants that are actually going forward with it. Um would have a better idea of the long-term benefits, you know, in that five-year span versus two years. And lastly, uh wetland restoration, so changing the contract term from fifteen to a range of ten to fifteen years. Um and then also allowing the use of the existing vegetation as a required buffer, even if it's not native. So if there is uh existing grasses out there. Um and the we're doing a project in that area. Um not not necessarily forcing them to make it a native buffer. Now, some grant requirements could require that to be the case. But in in other cases, it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense from a a benefit standpoint to take one perennial vegetation that might be in a good stand to. Uh changing it to a a native um vegetation. Um it just, we can use those funds elsewhere for other projects. And and then also allowing that range, a lot of our practices are ten years, and so. Um you know, fifteen years could come across as um, you know, a little bit alarming. A lot can change in fifteen years to. Um, you know, a landowner and in where they're at in life, and so uh by giving them the ability to to reduce it to ten. Or anywhere in between gives us some more flexibility. And that's one of those practices that we really, really want to see on the landscape, so if we can um get more participation by. Um, you know, reducing the uh the contract length, then then that's great. Um and and keep in mind too, that's one practice that I would say we we really don't see a lot of people um. Removing it after the contract term is up, so. Um there's a lot of work that goes into, in a lot of cases, um getting that wetland to be restored, and so. Um in in, I think a lot of landowners probably grow to enjoy the uh the aesthetic nature of it and the the look of it, so. Um we just don't see that uh coming out, and so by reducing it down to ten years, I I don't think that's gonna affect it too much. So um with that being said, this is an action item that um is much like the levian budget. Where we are looking for a recommendation from the WPC. That we would take this to um the WMO Board uh in December, so the December fourteenth meeting. Um so just wanted to kind of um clarify that before uh answering any questions.
Do Ryan, do we have any questions or is there uh motion?
Commissioner Weaver, this is Commissioner Pence. Uh obviously, being involved in this through the whole process. Uh I think Ryan did a great job summarizing our feelings as we will put these changes in place. So for that reason, I would be in position at this point to make the recommendation to the WMO Board to approve the twenty twenty-two tax program. And docket as presented today.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Weaver.
Casillas, I'll second the motion.
Great, thank you.
I'll do roll. Commissioner Weaver.
Hi.
Commissioner Pence.
Hi.
Commissioner Casillas.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
Commissioner Shay.
Hi.
Commissioner Verling.
Hi.
And Commissioner Phil.
Hi.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Bring on to the um stream bank stabilization application, right?
And Chair Commissioners, I should have pointed this out on the previous item, but it was. Um Madam Chair Weaver and Commissioner Pence that uh served as our WPC representatives on that subcommittee. So just want to say thank you both. Um it is a a lengthy meeting when we go through it. So we do appreciate your time um going through that, but I failed to mention it on the last item, so I wanted to make sure to um to mention it before before the meeting's over. Uh so getting to this item, um this is a stream bank stabilization project for Peter and Yvonne Harold. Um it is located in the city of Prior Lake, but it is within the WMO. Um this project is a little bit interesting because they have a great stabilization project that they installed on their property in two thousand sixteen. Um and now this eroding stream bank is starting to impact uh that project. And thus, this stream bank stabilization. And thus, this stream bank stabilization project is intended to reduce that erosion. So it's kind of a a good bang for your buck here. We're protecting one great civilization structure and then also reducing erosion in the stream as well. So this project would prevent sediment nutrients from entering Credit River. Estimated cost is seven thousand sixty dollars and the proposed amounts are four thousand two hundred thirty-six from the WMO and two thousand eight hundred and twenty-four from the landowners. The proposed funding source would be our local general fund, which does have sufficient funds for this project. All stream bank stabilization projects go through the screening committee for a review and recommendation. And if you'll notice in Troy's staff report earlier, this project was at their November sixteenth board meeting and was recommended for approval. I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for Ryan? Do we have a motion to approve our funds for this project?
Commissioner Shay, I'll make a motion to approve the the project.
You have a second?
Commissioner Verling, I'll second that.
Thank you, commissioners. I'll do a roll. Commissioner Weaver. Commissioner Weaver.
Sorry about that.
Okay, Commissioner Pence. Commissioner Casillas. Commissioner Schmidt. Commissioner Shay. Commissioner Verling. And Commissioner Phil. Thank you, commissioners.
Motion has passed. We can move on to the field border application.
Madam Chair Commissioners, so next item here, if you remember, at the September meeting, we went through potential re-enroll projects. And we reviewed a policy that we're gonna now include as part of the the docket going forward. But at that meeting, we thought it was appropriate that any re-Enrolls for the time being would go through the screening committee process as well. So just a heads up, this one and the next item are both re-enroll projects. So this application comes from Rose Scaramoza for a field border. And the property is located in Belle Plaine Township. It is a one-point-four acre field border. And our field border rate is actually lesser than filter ship. So to kind of explain the difference of a filter ship to a field border is a filter ship has to follow NRCS standards. And so there's, you know, USGS streams or DNR protected streams or waters that are an eligible component of a filter ship. Well, not every stream or potentially a private ditch is included on on those eligibility. So we created a field border because we felt as though there are still cases where even if something's not listed on a particular site that would make it eligible for filter ship, it still is a water body or receiving water and having some perennial vegetation there to reduce sediment nutrients from getting into it is is still appropriate. So just wanted to kind of explain that. But we did kind of set the rate a little lower. So the normal re-enroll rate is a hundred dollars an acre, but for field borders, we we had it just a little bit of a lesser amount. So this project would prevent sediment nutrients from entering intermittent stream that then eventually makes its way to Raven Stream. And it also slows runoff as well. The estimated cost of the project is one thousand fifty dollars and all of that would be coming from the WMO. So the project's already established. There's no kind of landowner funds that go into it since all the work's already done. The budget that we had for this year was twenty thousand. And this with the next project and the one that was approved in September, in total, they came in at, I think it was even less than ten thousand. And so we were able to use that other ten thousand towards other projects because we don't foresee any more of these coming till the end of the year. So with all that being said, we certainly had enough funds to to fund this project too. So as mentioned before, it wasn't explicit where re-Enrolls would go. And we decided that the screening committee review process would be the best way to handle these. And that was reviewed. Same thing as the Harold project at the November sixteenth board meeting for the SWCD and they recommended approval. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Do we have questions for Ryan or a recommendation that we use WMO general funds for this or recommend approval?
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve.
This is Commissioner Casillas. I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. I'll do a roll. Commissioner Weaver. Commissioner Pence. Commissioner Casillas. Commissioner Schmidt. Commissioner Shay. Commissioner Verling. And Commissioner Phil. Thank you, commissioners.
Pass. We're almost there. Last one, Ryan, filter strip application.
And Chair Commissioners, yeah, when I saw the agenda, I thought this might be a six o'clock meeting. So we're doing good on time. So last item, similar to the Scaramoza project, this is an application for Joe Menke on a filter ship project. The project resides in Sand Creek Township. Joe is interested in re-enrolling a two-acre filter ship along his private ditch. The reason it would be re-enrolled is both the filter ship and the field are that the original filter ship planting was a wider width than the minimum. So if you'll notice in the cost estimate, it does get broken down into the two different rates. So the field border is at the seventy-five dollars an acre and then the filter ship is at the hundred dollars an acre. And I'll show you that right here. So here's the breakdown of how we came up with the cost on this project. So still treating those field borders the same across if even in combination with the ship itself. So this project would prevent sediment nutrients from entering private ditch that eventually flows into Sand Creek. And it slows runoff as well. This project is proposed at eighteen hundred dollars and all of those would come from the local general fund. As previously mentioned, we certainly had the budget for this project as well with what we had set aside for re-Enrolls for this year. It was like the Scaramoza project, re-enroll, so it's going through the screening committee process. And as well, it went to the SCADA SWCD November sixteenth board meeting and was recommended for approval. So I will stand for any questions.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
Right. And do we have a second? Wait, do you need a name on that, Vanessa? I didn't see who's booked, so.
This is Joe Phil.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Um, do we have a second?
Commissioner Shay, I'll second the motion.
I'll do roll. Commissioner Weaver. Commissioner Pence. Commissioner Casillas. Commissioner Schmidt. Commissioner Shay. Commissioner Verling. And Commissioner Phil. Thank you, commissioners, for your time and your patience and your willingness to listen in. It's a problem to have, right? Lot of good applications, so.
All right, with that, do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I jumped on a quick that time.
That's good. Get on it.
Commissioner Casillas will second that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last one, Commissioner Weaver. Commissioner Casillas. Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
Commissioner Verling. And Commissioner Phil. Thank you, commissioners. I hope you all have a wonderful holiday season.
Thank you, you too.
Bye, everyone. See you in January.